Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. We're gonna do something a little different tonight. I'd like to first congratulate Eagle Scout Justin Hovarder. He's someplace in the audience this evening. And Cub Scout, Boy Scout Troop 14 is here. Excuse me, I just ran up the steps, to learn a little bit more about city government, and they'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Scout salute, hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust our hearts.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Keenan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Engelbert.
Here.
Alderman Langdon has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, and there are two of them. The first is for a special use permit by QuickTrip to construct a convenience store with fueling canopy, diesel fueling canopy, and two bay car wash at 1233 Midway Road. Director Kyle, could you tell us a little bit about the project?
Yes, well, the mayor just gave a brief summary of what the facility is to be comprised of. The reason that a special use permit is necessary for this project is that this property is in a C3 business and office zoning classification. Retail uses require a special use permit in that zoning district, and hence, the site plan is being submitted in support of that special use permit application.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to make comments on the special use permit this evening? Seeing no one, we'll call that special, that public hearing to a close. And the second public hearing is an application for a special use permit by James Fletcher, broker agent for AAK Holdings II, to reoccupy the office space at 100 Main Street, Manassia. Director Kyle?
Yes. A special use permit is required for this project because the facility has not been occupied as office space for more than a year, and hence, it has lost, the zoning aspects of it have lost their legal non-conforming status. And there are some deficiencies with regard to site landscaping primarily, and those have been now addressed through the special use permit application process.
Thank you. Does anyone care to comment on the special use permit for 100 Main Street? Seeing no one, we'll call that public hearing to a close as well. Item E is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. At this point, any of you are welcome to step up to the microphone and, and comment on anything that you think is important that the common council or city department heads would need to know about what's going on in the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time? You're welcome to...
Troop 14, I was in that job. Joe Brenesky was my scoutmaster. We used to call him Preacher Joe. Some other time I'll tell you about that. My name is Dick Meyer. I live at 1201 Grove Street in Manassia. I've lived in Manassia about 67 years of my life. The Navy used, kept up four of them. Anyhow, I'm reason I'm called, I'm up here. I have, I've seen what I thought was deceptive campaign literature, which insinuated that two candidates, two candidate, from two candidates, that they have the idea that the Alderman, or somebody in the council wants to privatize our parks. One person from, on Park Street was afraid that that might legalize alcohol in Smith Park again. And I told them that can't happen, because there's a covenants. A covenants is not an ordinance. Covenants cannot be reversed. But anyhow, they don't know that. And I don't, the fifth district where I live, I haven't talked to my neighbors over there. But if you've lived in Manassia, anytime, our parks are precious to us. We live for our parks. And I don't want people thinking that will change. And that's all, I, I thought that campaign was deceptive, and I wanted to bring it to the people's attention, because that's not the way we're supposed to run this government. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes, sorry about the full house tonight. Anyone else who wishes to comment this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. Chief Oxer is here to introduce our new firefighter this evening. Not sure, there he is.
First of, first of all, let me thank Mayor Murkis and the common council of the City of Manassia for being able to, to introduce Nina Manassia Fire Rescue's newest member, Jaime Martinez Jr. Jaime is joined here tonight by his lovely wife, Lacy. Lacy, just raise your hand. Of almost one year. They're newlyweds. Jaime was born in Laredo, Texas, but his family moved to Sheboygan, Wisconsin when he was six years old, and he was raised there. He attended elementary school in Sheboygan, and attended Sheboygan High School. One of these accomplishments is, he was captain of the varsity football team for his junior and senior years, something you'd be very proud of, and that's quite an accomplishment. After a brief time at the University of Whitewater playing football, he decided to change careers. His career path led him to the United States Marine Corps. Jaime, Jaime, excuse me. Jaime was an air traffic control and navigational technician. He served in Japan before being assigned to Jacksonville, North Carolina. While stationed in Jacksonville, he was deployed, deployed three times to Iraq and Afghanistan. He received an honorable discharge after completing five and a half years in the Marine Corps. And at this time, I'd just like to thank him for his years of service in the Marine Corps. I think it's quite a distinguishing honor to have served your country in that capacity. Jaime returned to Wisconsin and became interested in becoming a firefighter. He completed the fire protection technician and EMT programs at the Foxville Lake Technical College, and works as a volunteer for the Greenville Fire Department. At this time, I'd like City Clerk Debbie Galliazi to take time to swear Jaime in, if I could please. Jaime, if we could walk up front.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jaime Martinez Jr.
I, Jaime Martinez Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
For the cities of Nina and Manassia.
For the cities of Nina and Manassia.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers.
To serve my commanding officers.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the cities of Nina and Manassia.
To serve the citizens of the cities of Nina and Manassia.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws.
And to uphold the laws.
And the constitutions.
And the constitutions.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Wisconsin.
The state of Wisconsin.
And the cities of Nina and Manassia.
And the cities of Nina and Manassia.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to present Jaime with his badge, and we'll do that after the formalities. Hopefully I get this without too much of a problem.
Too much blood.
Too much blood. I'm nervous, and I don't want to poke you with this thing. As everyone has already done, I just wanted everyone to join me in congratulating Jaime as becoming the newest member of Nina Manassia Fire Rescue, and I wish him a long and illustrious career.
Mayor, I know that the chief, when he went to prom, had a hard time putting on the corsage, too.
Item two is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion to approve, to accept? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive and put on file Minutes A through H, and Communications I through N.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Mark, I guess it would be Item K, the Phase Four Cross Connection Home Inspection Letter. What's initiating this?
It's just a continuation of the program that we started several years ago, and that was abandoned for a while, just due to other projects and time constraints. So now we're getting back into finishing the rest of the city.
Oh, this area has never been...
Correct. We, this is the, part of the city that's in the west half of the city and just north of the river. And then, we still have the west half of the island yet to do. So it'll be, we'll be phasing in these next portions of the city.
Any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Letter I. Would you like to...
Director Kyle? Are you looking at the...
That was yours.
I looked at L. So Justin Hovarder is here this evening. Justin, did you want to stand up? It's quite an achievement and an honor to receive Eagle status, and Justin has done that this, was it last weekend or two weekends ago?
Oh, it's, it's been quite a while, December.
The ceremony was...
This ceremony was this past Saturday, yes.
Okay. So, and Justin's projects were building trellises and benches, and working with landscaping at Wilson Elementary School. Justin lives up in the Highland, is it Highland Park? Highland Terrace, Stan? Help me out.
I know, you're my Alderman, so.
Highland Terrace neighborhood. But it's great that you are all able to come here this evening, and we congratulate you on your status of being an Eagle. Did you want to say anything, or, if you do, you should use the mic, though.
Thank you guys for having us tonight, and thanks.
Thank you, Justin. Sorry to put you on the spot. You didn't know you were gonna have a speech tonight. I was looking at Item L. Any other discussion this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are four items this evening. The minutes to approve from the common council meeting of March 2nd of 2015. The Nina Manassia Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendation to extend the contract for statewide structural collapse team members, and amend the contract prior, contract period for January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2016. And the Plan Commission recommendations for the special use permit for the QuickTrip Convenience Store with the following conditions. Greg, you had to make a whole bunch of them, didn't you? That the parking lot interior landscaping comply with Section 13112G5B. That landscape planters be placed adjacent to the building in lieu of landscaping adjacent to the building as required by Section 13112G3. That a new landscaping plan showing the revised parking lot interior landscaping and planter location and planting plan be submitted for review. That bollards are placed in lieu of the curbing adjacent to the building requirements of Section 13151B2B. And that a revised site plan be submitted showing the bollard locations. That the erosion control and stormwater management plans be approved by the Public Works Department. That the canopy lighting intensity be brought into compliance with the lighting standards of 131125. That parking lot lighting comply with color rendition index of 50 or greater per Section 131125. That a revised lighting plan be submitted for review showing the changes to the parking lot and canopy lighting. That annexation of parcel 0080381 be completed prior to building occupancy. And that submission of a CSM recombining the parcels be completed prior to occupancy. And Item 4 is the special use permit for 100 Main Street, AAK Holdings II. That the maple trees on the Main Street frontage be replaced, and extension of the transitional area to the dumpster. That the parking lot transitional area be brought into full compliance with all ordinance standards upon reconstruction of the parking lot. That parking lot is to be sealed and striped upon sale of the property. That planting plan and tree replacement be reviewed and approved by the city forester. That stone mulch be used to match the existing mulch on property. That they pursue installation of canopy trees with the adjoining property using a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. That the plantings be done by June 15th. And that they replace trees on the east side of the property. I'm not sure what the last one is, Greg. Deciduous and evergreens. Okay. Okay, so that one is actually combined with the one, two above. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 3, the Planting Commission's recommendation for the special use permit of 1233 Midway Road, the QuickTrip project.
Others? Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1, 2, and 4.
There's a motion, a second. We can't discuss, okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried. Our roll call, 7-0.
Do we have a motion for Item 3 at this point, the QuickTrip store?
I got a question after, I can make the motion. I make a motion to approve the special use permit for 1233 Midway Road, QuickTrip Convenience Center.
Is there a second, there's a motion, a second? Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, I have a question on the frontage along Appleton Road, Highway 47. Was there any discussion about a sidewalk on that parcel, or the parcels that we're combining?
There's, the whole Highway 47 corridor is, I think, a topic for discussion relative to sidewalk. That facility, when it's, when it's reconstructed, will be required to have accommodations for vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. So when the facility is reconstructed, sidewalks would be put in as part of the state project at that time. In this instance, there's no sidewalk, you know, connecting to the property. So although I'm fully in support of that notion of getting sidewalk there, it probably won't occur until that bigger project takes place.
So there's adequate easement, or city, or state property?
Well, if additional, if additional property acquisition was required, that would be the obligation of the state of Wisconsin to identify what's needed as part of a right-of-way plat, and then the acquisition would take place at that time. There are things that could be done, perhaps within the existing right-of-way. There's, you know, some pretty significant storm sewers that are, you know, sort of alternate on, on either side of Appleton Road, that would likely go away with the reconstruction. There might be opportunities to reconfigure the lanes, and, you know, until those plans are prepared, it's really difficult to see whether right-of-way would be required to accommodate the sidewalk.
Yeah, my concern is this is gonna become the shortcut for that corner, and we shouldn't have people riding their bikes and walking through there to make the shortcut to the college or whatever, to a parking lot.
And, well, some of that should be mitigated, because if they were coming north on 47, they would likely go through Whitman Drive and University Drive if, if the university was their destination.
Yes, but there's a lot of people that are walking toward ShopCo and...
I don't disagree. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic in that Highway 47 corridor that's not being accommodated.
So you're saying on this plot plan, it's really small, I don't have the big one with me, there's accommodation for pedestrians, and...
There is not, no.
And we, why couldn't we put it in now?
Well...
Or they put it in now?
We don't know what is needed, and, you know, if, if it's in the right-of-way, that would imply that, you know, we'd be acquiring property for that purpose. And, and, you know, we could ask for a contribution, but at this time, we don't know what we'd be asking them to contribute.
Okay. Are there tentative plans out there for this, this stretch of highway?
The reconstruction, they resurfaced when...
Oh, I don't know, seven years ago?
Yeah. And so, that was our hope, that when, when they, prior to them resurfacing, we were expecting the reconstruction to occur at that time. And then, it was decided that, no, it would just be a resurfacing. So that now has extended the life of that another, what, 15 years? So we're another eight years out or so, probably, until this happens.
Yeah. Eight years turns into 16 real quick, and I would like to see something on that stretch along the highway. Even, even if it's temporary, it was just asphalt. Is there any way of working that into this plan?
Again, I'd be hesitant to put it in this plan with just that one little piece there. We'd really need to have a bigger picture.
And the property further south would be in the town of Manassia, correct? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address the, a few of the issues. First, I want to welcome QuickTrip again to the City of Manassia. I'm a big fan of QuickTrip. I go there all the time. And I think this is a huge asset for the City of Manassia. And I think if we ask them to do things, they'll do them, because they're, they're good to all their communities that they come to. I've been contacted by at least one constituent who's always concerned about landscaping, and has issues with this landscaping issue. Section 13-1-12G5B speaks of landscaping in front of the building, but how about landscaping around the project itself? Will there be grass, and shrubs, and trees of that sort? Because I think there's some confusion, because QuickTrip doesn't put landscaping in front of their building, but I believe they do so, you know, around their properties.
There's, on this side, there is a bio-retention facility that is along the Appleton Road corridor, and that will have plant materials in it that are, that are capable of dealing with water quality function, but are also capable of providing some aesthetic enhancement. And then, on the Midway Road frontage, there is quite an extensive planting area there along the right-of-way.
Okay.
And as well, there is some interior parking lot landscaping.
And I think that's where the confusion is out there in the community, because you're talking about some planters, and then, there's a feeling out there that all they're gonna do is put out some planters. And that's not the case. So I want to clear that up for the public. Also, too, I strongly agree with Alderman Zalinski about sidewalks. You know, being up here a number of years, one thing I realize, you don't put them in now, they don't get put in. And I think when you, when you build a project like this, of this scale, you want the sidewalks. It would absolutely take away from QuickTrip if you didn't have the sidewalks. To me, it would just seem like you're out in the country or something, which doesn't, and isn't very pedestrian friendly. And I know that QuickTrip is a company that cares about, not just, you know, motor traffic, but people who walk and people who bike. So I would, I would go along with Alderman Zalinski on that we go forward and have the sidewalks installed on Appleton Road, because they had to be installed on the other side of the road on Appleton in front of the Marathon Station. So I would, would encourage that, that the Community Development Department approach QuickTrip and do that. To have my absolute blessing, I would think that that would be something that's normal. And I would think they would almost be a company that would want to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Alderman Taylor?
I'd too like to welcome QuickTrip to the City of Manassia for a second time. And when I was a scout's age, I used to ride my bike out to Whitman Trapaline Center and to Valley Fair, and sometimes we'd ride downtown Appleton. And all these years have passed, and we still don't have a safe way to get down Highway 47 to Appleton. And the city has certainly done their, their fair share as far as property that we own on Appleton Road and, and putting sidewalks in. And also, we made quite an investment on Midway Road from the bond to company all the way down to Oneida Street. And that certainly serves the housing projects we have in that area, and businesses that we have in that area. But the 47 corridor really needs to be upgraded. And if you start at Ninth Street, and I know this project was in the town, they just built a new gas station on the corner of Ninth and Recie, or Ninth and Appleton Road. And that new gas station, they put the sidewalks in. And so, I think it's a start on, on that end. And if we start on the other end, hopefully, we can talk to our, our partners, the town of Manassia here, and get, get the sidewalk put in. I was a little disappointed when, uh, the store went in, Dollar General? When Dollar General went in, and we don't have the proper sidewalks in that area, too. So it's, it's time that we take the initiative, and for the safety of, of our citizens. And that area, I see a lot of people cutting across the street over to, young people that live in the housing for the university are going, walking over to Pigley Wickley. And I just don't want them to have a new parking lot to walk through. I think we need the proper sidewalks for, for their safety. So I'm interested in, in having that. If we need to add that to the project, I'd be willing to do that. And also, Greg, could you explain to landscape planters, instead of the landscaping? And I haven't seen in this large package here, and you did provide a nice packet for us to look at here. But the planters, I'm not, I don't have a sense of where those are, or how many there are.
Okay. So as what was alluded to in the conditions here, a three-foot wide planting strip is typically required around the, the portions of the building that face a public street or parking lot. And the representative of QuickTrip who appeared at the meeting kind of discussed their concerns about that landscaping, in as much as their experience has been that it's a collector of litter and cigarette butts and that sort of thing as people leave the buildings. And so, in lieu of those, that foundation planting, they are putting together a plan that will utilize a significant number of plant, planters. These would be larger planters that then would be planted. And I think they also do seasonal type of things in there as well. So the condition that the Plan Commission placed was that a plan can come back showing us exactly... So the condition that the plan commission placed was that a plan can come back showing us exactly what those planters will be and where they will be located.
Do you know how many?
I do not at this time. The representative from QuickTrip that's here tonight said they've, they've finished up now their plans that meet those conditions and I'll be getting those tomorrow, but I haven't seen them.
It's funny that you mentioned that this strip of land they talk about is a collector for litter and cigarettes. And that's exactly what I told Alderman Zelenek, that these planters do too. So I think there's a, it's a convenient thing for people walking through that area. But I would like to know as far as what, how many they're going to be and what, and what type of planters and what they look like. And are we going to create the same amount of square footage that we would have, have in the green space going to the planters? I think there should be a trade-off there.
Okay, I will take that under advisement. Again, I haven't seen the, the plan, so.
I certainly, again, I'm very much in favor of sidewalks. Thank you.
Alderman Keahan?
Thank you. Could you talk about the item, the annexation of parcel zero zero eight dash zero three eight one being completed prior to occupancy? Like what piece that is and the reason for it?
There's, the, the main body of the property was owned and operated by Winnebago Color Press. And the acquisition that is being undertaken is for that property. And also, the former Joe DeGol that's at the corner of Midway and forty-seven. So QuickTrip has now completed the acquisition of that property. And as you can see from the planner, planning to incorporate that into the site. We are currently working on an annexation in the town and are wanting to combine, combine this parcel with, with another parcel or perhaps more that we are currently working on.
Thank you. Alderman Zelenek?
Mayor, so far, three council members have spoken about sidewalks. So I think when you do have your meeting with representatives, I know there's a representative here today that, that issue be addressed. We can't force the issue, from what I understand. We do have an ordinance though. But then we would have to have everybody that doesn't have a sidewalk be required to have a sidewalk, so. But the thing is, is that you're coming into the community. I know you're good stewards and that safety is really one of our responsibilities. We take an oath, just as the firefighter did before and one of our offices, public safety. So I would encourage QuickTrip to seriously look at putting in the sidewalk. Thank you.
Your other discussion? Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, if they were to put this in, you know, percentage of their lot is required to be green space. If they were to put this sidewalk in, what does that do for their, for their plans? They have to increase, make their parking area smaller and increase that or?
It sort of depends where the sidewalk lands. We would need to have, typically, the sidewalk would be placed within public right-of-way. And if there were insufficient room within the existing forty-seven right-of-way, then there would be a need to somehow or other acquire that additional right-of-way for the sidewalk. And so then we would evaluate what impact shifting that into the site would have from, not just from their landscaping, but then we also have the stormwater piece that we would have to look at. I believe there's enough area on the site where it could be accommodated elsewhere. But it may, you know, the, the site layout is predicated on a good number of things where the entrants and exits are, the turning radius for trucks, you know, how the bays are situated, the distance between the pumps and the drive aisles. And so all of that stuff, when, when you start kind of squishing stuff around it, it does have a broader impact. And without really knowing what would move where, I have a real hard time answering something specifically.
How wide of a sidewalk do you think we're...
Well, our normal sidewalk would be five feet.
But in the corridor, this is, wouldn't that typically be a little bit larger than what in there?
No, it would be, yes. That's what we have, like, by Matthew's Tire and that, that section is all four foot five.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Zelenek?
I guess that's what I was going to just say, is that we're talking five feet. That's what our ordinance says. And this is a very large site. This isn't some small little corner area or something. I mean, if they could do it over where Alderman Taylor was talking about at Ninth and forty-seven there, they can easily accommodate this, a huge lot over there. This is public right-of-way where the sidewalk would go anyways.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February twenty-sixth through March twelfth. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of two twenty-six fifteen to three twelve fifteen in the amount of three million six hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
So motion, a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Zelenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Page ten, and that's the bottom large print, page ten. I know we have a few page tens, but it's, it's to the Conneke Environmental Consultants. And of course, Greg would probably need to be addressing that particular issue. But again, I am, yeah, it is the Racine Street Properties. The council realizes that I've been addressing this one now for about three years. And it kind of escaped us for a while and now it's, it's back on and they're billing us again. And here it is, another twenty-four hundred dollars. I mean, we, we just keep getting blood. And I keep hearing, well, that's all right, the state pays for it. But I don't care, we're all taxpayers here. And, and I just think that, I wonder what would happen if we switched the consultant? If, if the billing would be different or if we could close this site out? I, I thought we were close to closing the site out. I, I thought Greg had given us a report that that was happening. Maybe this is the final payment. But again, if this is just going to be continuing, again, I'm having, I'm going to have issues with that. So unfortunately, as you can tell, I'm stalling because Greg is in the audience and he's the person that can address this.
We can, we can put a report together for the next council meeting for you?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that.
I guess, well, it looks like Greg may be coming back.
Unless someone else has another one? You have one? Okay, we'll come.
Check number forty-nine two ninety-four, P J C Group, TIF eleven. I just want to know, there's a payment going out. What's the schedule and how is the project moving forward on here? We're making another payment and I know this TIF is way behind and...
Well, I'll let Peggy address how far behind the TIF is. The, the construction activity is behind. I don't, I don't think we're having a financial issue with TIF eleven. This payment was made according to our schedule. And as, as you know, we prepaid a pretty large portion of the development incentives in twenty-twelve, I think it was. And this, the remaining payments relate to the site referred to as the land reclamation site, which, as you well know, has been under reclamation for quite some time. As you can see from the site, they, they still are storing some materials on there. The material is being stored in such a fashion, it is not interfering with our trail construction, which is about to commence. And we will be working with them to get that out of there very soon. They, I don't know if they have listed it yet. I had a call from Edmund Zelinski about a month ago indicating they were planning on listing it with a broker. So I don't know whether or not that has happened, but they are seriously going to start marketing that property.
Was there any indication of when these piles of grown-up building and concrete are going to be leaving? Because it sort of looks like a staging area right now.
It is and has been a staging area. And those materials will be gone, I would say, within, I would say, within the next sixty days or so.
Yeah, and I was going to bring up the marketing too. When is the marketing going to aggressively start there? Get a sign up, show people what actually plots are, or lots are out there and what's available to build on and...
Yeah, we'd be anxious for that task.
Thank you.
Alderman Zelenek, round two?
Yeah, round two, Greg. While you're out in the hallway, I brought up on page ten, check forty-nine two eighty-one, the Conneck Environmental Consultants. I thought you were reporting. At least you got a smile on your face. That's good news for me. Are we closing out or...
Yes, they've, they've abandoned the monitoring wells. And that's primarily what this costs is relating to the abandonment. There was one monitoring well that was damaged and they, in their report to the D N R, said they could not properly abandon that. So then last week, I got an email from D N R saying that, well, no, you have to properly abandon it. So they'll be going out, they'll have to excavate to remove the obstruction and then fill it in. So there'll be more expense coming along with this. But this is all PECFA-funded.
Excellent. Thank you. Good news, Manasha.
Other questions? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand thirteen through fifteen licensing period. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand thirteen through two thousand fifteen licensing period as listed in the police department memo dated March eleventh, two thousand fifteen.
So motion, a second? Any discussion? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item three is an authorization to distribute the community development investment grant funds to Foodman Two Inc. and Food F two R LLC. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move for the authorization to distribute the community development investment grant funds to Foodman Two Inc. and F two R LLC.
There's a motion, a second? Any discussion? Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. Who's holding onto the check or do we have the check?
We just received the check last Friday.
Okay, because I remember reading something in here, we didn't receive the check, so it's hard to distribute a check.
Further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Was this on twice? Okay, okay. Item J is ordinances and resolutions. I was just checking to see if it had been on the agenda twice, I couldn't remember. It's an ordinance for parking regulations on, is it DePere Street? Alderman Zelenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the adoption of ordinance oh five fifteen. The ordinance amending Title Ten, Chapter One, Article C, Section ten dash one twenty-three. I don't know why there's an A, twenty-six A M. Is, is there a reason why it's A M? Okay, thank you. Parking regulations. Thank you.
There's a motion, a second? Is there further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
The next item on the agenda is item N, public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. This is your opportunity to, to comment anything that we had spoken about this evening, if anyone would like to. Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.